Notes is hereby given that the city council of the city of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a special meeting on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, beginning at six P M. In council chambers at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. Point with section five, five, one dot one, two, seven, B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer in the form of the Lamarck City Council intend to be, and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called in order. Here, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D is not with us at this time. Amen.
Present. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman McCallum is currently en route, and she will join us as soon as possible. Now we'll have our invocation today from our very own Pastor Jervy Wyndham. Our pastors resonate church on forty-five, on forty-five Peter. Welcome Pastor Jervy. Let's stand as we join Pastor Jervy in prayer.
Thank you all. I'm going to read this simple passage that we're all very familiar with. And then I think it would be appropriate if we all would recite our Lord's Prayer together as a community. This is First Corinthians, chapter thirteen. If I speak in the tongues of men and their angels, but do not have love, I'm only a resounding gong and a clang and symbol. If I have the gift of prophecy and can phantom all mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have faith that can move mountains, but I do not have love, I am nothing. If I give all I possess to the poor and give over my body to hardship that I may boast, but do not have love, I gain nothing. Love is patient. Love is kind. It does not envy. It does not boast. It is not proud. It does not dishonor others. It is not self-seeking. It is not easily angered. It keeps no records of wrong. Love does not delight in evil, but rejoices with the truth. It always protects, always trusts, always hopes, always perseveres. Love never fails. Our Father, who art in heaven. Amen. May our Lord teach us how to love. Amen.
Again, welcome, 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 welcome. We've come now to item four, our citizens' participation. It's limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. You wish to speak, give the mayor your full name, address, and item you wish to speak about. Complies with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you are visiting with us via phone, you may press star six to mute or unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, if you are visiting with us via the Zoom platform on smartphone, a tablet, or a computer, in the lower portion of your screen, there should be a microphone icon. You can press that to mute and unmute yourself if you wish to speak. If you are online wishing to speak, the Zoom platform also allows you to raise your hand. And so if you can find that, that area of the Zoom platform, we would like for you to raise your hand so that Kyle can recognize you when it is your turn to speak. If you are visiting with us in person, you may approach the podium to my left and to your right. Give the mayor your name, address, and item you wish to speak about, and you will have three minutes in which to speak. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak? Thank you. Lord of mine. Welcome, Miss Laura.
Hello. Laura Devine, fourteen oh six Mary Lane, Lamar. And the reason why I'm coming is to ask, request a background check on Chief Farrakhan. And the reason is, when he was brought back, was brought back as a consultant. My understanding, he did not do a background check because he was consulted. But as he was moved into the chief's position, from what I understand, there was a background check, but it was done by another officer in the P D that would be, you know, under him now. I worked in the education field. And at the college, we did, we had third-party background checks. It just does not seem right that you would have an officer do a background check on someone that is going to be supervised by that person. It just opens up a whole can of worms. And I think the city needs to do due diligence and hire a third party and do a background check on Chief Farrakhan.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Hold, hold it right there, Miss Laura.
Okay.
Say so, a point of information, I know that you and I had a discussion, per Miss Laura's request, do you have some information that you'd like to share with Miss Laura?
Only information I could share at this time is my understanding, obviously this having occurred before my arrival,
Exactly.
was something along the lines that an annual T cole background would have been completed, and we didn't pull the background. We simply pulled what was already been done in order to retain that T cole certification. But the absence of preparation before this, if you'd allow me a chance to get the firm answer for that, and if we can settle a meeting with our human resource director, yourself and myself to discuss that.
Okay.
And obviously, we can't share. Please, if you don't mind, we can't share, obviously.
Exactly.
But just to give you the peace of mind to show you that that would have been taken care of.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
You good, Miss Laura?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
James Osteen. Good evening, James, and welcome.
James Osteen, twenty twelve, Jared, Donna, and Lamar. I want to have a discussion about the resolution twenty twenty-two zero zero five four. If y'all go to that resolution. It's on page eight of eleven. It's concerning the amendments, the resolution. Everybody there? If y'all go down to where it says now, therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Lamarck, Texas, and go to section two, you see section two? The recall election shall be scheduled for Tuesday, November the eighth. This is not a recall on amendments. If you go to your, your recall resolution, it, you know, that's where the recall is. But this should say the charter amendment election shall be scheduled on so-and-so date. It shouldn't say recall because the amendments have nothing to do with recall. You see that? So, you know, I don't know how y'all going to rectify that if you can even act on it tonight, or if you can do an amendment and change that, that language because it's not the right language.
Yeah.
And I don't want y'all to vote on something with the wrong language.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Point taken. Gus, can you research that and give us an opinion before we
Absolutely, ma'am.
act on that item? Thank you. You good, James? Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. I understand. Uh, Robert Mitchich. Welcome, Robert.
Robert Mitchich, twenty-four, North Purle. Y'all have on this meeting agenda to appoint board members for commissions and boards. I would like to request that the boards, the the individuals that y'all were seeking for the tourist board have all been submitted to you and have been in your possession now for months or more. And there are folks that are asking when y'all are going to do that and make those appointments. Tonight would be the best night to do it so they can get their meeting scheduled that has been promised to them and see about the funding that is in that tourist. And secondly, I'd like to ask Susie Koo, when the ledgers are going to be done on the city because they weren't done last year or this year. They're supposed to be completed monthly, and then you have a year-end accounting for it. It sure makes CPAs work a lot easier, and that is something we are lacking. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Joseph Lowry. Welcome, Joseph.
Joseph Lowry, twenty-five oh three Cedar Drive. I want to come up here and ask again to stop the racial division in the community. And just remind people that it's destroying the community. And it's causing nothing but problems, and hopefully we can put an end to that pretty soon. And also I want to touch on the the audit. There was a lot of emphasis on, we had an audit. It was not a forensic audit. They don't look for any type of fraudulent activity. It's just to make sure that P D monies and P D fire monies and fire. It was not a forensic audit in any way, shape, or form. They got an award. It was like a participation trophy. They get, they've got it for several years, but as they said, it had been wrong for several years in a row, and they still got their participation trophy. So I want the community to know that. It's not a forensic audit. They did not have a forensic audit. I want to make that very clear. And that's about it.
Thank you, Joseph. All right, we're at item five. Resolutions, the consent. Council, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items under the consent agenda. Are we wishing to pull any of those items at this time?
I think we need to get clarification on the five-four first.
On what, sir?
Two zero zero two dot zero zero five four.
Okay. Okay.
I know you asked the attorney to, for his legal opinion.
Okay. Gus, you ready to weigh in?
Absolutely, ma'am. The, as to the, the resolution, it has been noticed by caption. So the, the city council, it is proper to discuss. If the council wishes to amend the resolution, if the council wishes to pass this resolution, what I would ask is that in section two, it be, the council make the oral motion to amend charter or recall election to be charter review election as its reference further on in the document.
Very good. Council, do you have any questions for Gus? As relates to that interpretation?
Just if I get it cleared, if I make sure I got it right, so we can go ahead, vote on this with the verbal amendments to change that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
Also, just, this is just clarification. I haven't
Okay.
I voted for these, but I've never put them, you know, on the ballot. But to be clear, and I think Councilman Osteen cleared it up a bit for me. We're going to be, when we vote on this in the whatever day for the election, we'll be we'll be saying yay or nay on each one of the eleven items that the committee submitted. Is that accurate?
That is, what, that is correct.
Okay.
Or I'm, I'm sorry, are you asking, is the council going to have the option to vote on one through eleven from the dais tonight?
That would be one, yes.
Okay. Yes, if y'all wanted to break, I, I would say if you want to do that, you're, you're going to need to pull it from the consent agenda to modify that. And what you would do is say, I make a motion to approve these numbers, whatever they are, or go one by one, however they yeah, however the council.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably going to be pulled from the consent agenda. That needs discussion. And definitely we need that and item two. We really need to have Casey. We need, we need to have a full council to deal with those because those are items that will be going to the electorate. And it's important that we have Casey's, if she has one, perspective and her vote on record for both of those.
And, and Mary, may I ask you or or Gus, the, is there a requirement that we have this election in November? Or can it be deferred as we clarify all these?
You're referring to the charter, to the charter review election?
Yes, sir.
That there, there is no explicit requirement it be conducted in November?
No. Okay. And if it's not conducted in November, do we have the option of then setting a date for it, or would it have to be in May?
The council could, the, the triggering event would be when the council chooses to call that election. You, you can't call it too far out, essentially. So, is that, does that answer your question? Could, is your question, could you have it in May?
Yes.
Yes.
You could. Okay.
Captain, the council could choose to, but council would have to do that, call that election at a later date.
At a later date.
Yeah. Well, looks like we're pulling item one and two. We're going to try to wait for Casey. That give, that gets us to item three.
Mayor, if, if I may. I'd like to, for discussion purposes, look at five, six, and five, seven for possible pulling based on something that has transpired since we posted these items.
Okay. Let's do that. Let, let's, let's start there. Let's, let's start with your items, and then we will take the rest of those that are still left on the consent agenda. And then we'll move through our meeting until Casey arrives. Sounds good, council?
Item two, five, two, are you talking, I don't want to totally strike it out.
Yeah, no, we're pulling it for discussion.
So we're going to move it to the end.
We're going to deal with that isolated, just like we're dealing with the charter review election.
Okay, but we, I, I mean, it, okay, so we're going to talk about it tonight.
Yeah.
Just at a later date.
We're going to deal with it tonight. Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
So Sayza, you are on item five.
Six and five, seven.
Five, six, go ahead.
So discussion on, on these items, this is a potential funding opportunity that we have looked at. It is a reconnecting communities. It is a federal funding opportunity that has come to light. Ordinarily, what we do with these being federal funds, we would take this opportunity to go out and get engineering done or some form of grant work done, or maybe partnering with a company like Grant Works to come in and do the admin side of things. And I think it'd be prudent for us to look at a much, much more efficient way of doing so, similar to what we did back when we were introducing the actual light study. We found that it'd be much faster and easier. We could do some things a little bit differently by taking on some of the responsibilities in-house and maybe doing so with a report that already existed. If you give me a moment, we're going to pull up a presentation that you heard back in twenty eighteen that was done by the Goodman Group. You guys remember that? It was done essentially letting you know about some project that they had in mind in order to reconnect communities. This information had been submitted and used for some potential funding that had taken place. If you could pull up the PowerPoint. I'll tell you what. At the PowerPoint number two, I think one of them was a PDF, there was a PowerPoint. And if we could just look at that briefly, essentially what we're doing here is recapping what you looked at back in twenty eighteen. There was a list of about eleven projects that were of vital importance there for, for the community that was deemed important back when the study was done. I believe this was under Mr. Butler. So this map that's shown to you shows in, in a category of how all these projects were itemized and categorized. We've had the pleasure of already completing one of them or getting funding for one that hopefully will start here sooner than later. That's already in pre-engineering phases to get a sidewalk put in on Main Street going from I forty-five all the way to Highway three. Unfortunately, there's been a large list of accidents and even fatalities have taken place in that corridor. On Friday, it was announced that we are being considered for a sidewalk to be provided by text artists as well to take sidewalks from Highway, excuse me, from Main Street all the way to Texas Ave, which is highlighted in the other corridor there that's in between, which is another major thorough, and it's also a tech stock roadway. What we're trying to do with this opportunity is create some type of way to connect the east side to the west side for those that may be traveling for work, school, or what have you, to connect a walking capability or biking capability to go from Highway one forty-six all the way to two double oh four on Texas Ave. And this is the study that was done. What we're trying to do is clean up this study to connect that all the way through in, involving all those projects, partnering with several different funding opportunities to try to put them all together to put this project in play. We're looking at anywhere between five and a half to six million dollars of total cost to put a sidewalk. I mean, that's a very long way across the entire center of the city. There is a funding opportunity that the expiration date is October thirteenth. That's what was put, put, put before you. And although the RFP way is a way that we can do it, understand that if we do an RFP and go through the process, we won't be able to take action until our next regular council meeting, which will be September thirteenth, which only allow us a month to do so. Well, what we've been able to take action on, if you will, if, if you approve us to do so, is pull these items and pick up with the Goodman Group that has already done a lot of the legwork that we're going to have somebody else do. So this is a great opportunity for us because a lot of the work is done in this, in this item that was heard before this council back in twenty eighteen, including cost, benefit costs and so forth, which is part of what we're showcasing here that describes it. It would give you a much faster way of getting to those goals that you guys, that was approved by this council or council in general back in twenty eighteen. I think it's prudent for us to do so. I think it'll be a lot less expensive. It'll save us time and allow us to put a much more formidable application through because whoever we were to hire, they're essentially going to use the same information that the works already been done and the council's already paid for. So I think it's a, a much more efficient for time. It allows us to put in a stronger application, allows us to streamline the process and pick up where we left off with something that's already been approved by council, whether this, any council members that may be serving here or any that did so in the past during that time.
Sir. Did this study also touch upon bike paths?
This one in particular, this specific opportunity that we're applying for here, and this one is only sidewalks, but the intention is to work with text doc to provide bike paths, bike paths or dual-use paths, meaning it can be used for bicycle, bicycle and/or vehicular traffic, similar to what we're looking at doing in the future on some of our other roads, be it Cedar, Bayou, Lake, West area, so forth.
I think you know, under this grant opportunity, that's a big part of the, of the point system.
It is.
Setting a plan and a bike path.
It is, and we are working with text to see if they can include that as part of it. Because we're already doing some construction in that sense to allow our application to be that much stronger. We have reached out to text doc for partnership. We have reached out to our E D C, since they're the ones who kind of took the lead on this back in twenty eighteen on behalf of the city, meeting with the Goodman Group and kind of getting that done under both E D C and under then city manager Butler. So at that time, this is kind of where the, the budget was left off. One of the things that you've asked for direction from, from this staff since my arrival was to look through what plans had been done and take advantage of those plans and pursue trying to bring those plans into fruition. And here's another example of that. We've already making, made strides on two large parcels of sidewalks in our city. As we all know, there's a very big lack of pedestrian accessibility in our city, and if this project were to be accepted as a formal project, because it's essentially connecting three state roads and going under forty-five to allow for a large movement of pedestrian or bicycle traffic. So if you would allow us to please pull these items today, not vote on them and allow us to proceed in a much more efficient manner. Again, for full transparency, we wanted to do so properly. The agenda had already been posted. We weren't going to take, take them down from the agenda. I'd rather first explain the project to you.
Any questions for Sayza on these items? Item five, six, and five seven? Is that right, Sayza?
Yes, sir.
Five, six, five.
Five, six, and five, seven. We were, we as a staff requesting to pull those items and allow us to continue doing so administratively as we would under our purview, assuming that whatever the costs are, don't cross our threshold. If that comes to light, then obviously we'll have to do this properly and get recharged and so forth.
Does anybody have any objection to us pulling these two items?
I recommend we approve them to five, six, and five, seven. Okay. Both.
We don't have to act unless you all want to act. We can, as presided, we can just simply say we're not going to entertain those items today.
Okay.
Well, we're not going to entertain those items today. Very good. Any other items need to be pulled from the consent agenda? So let me read you what we have in our consent agenda. Go ahead, Sayza.
In case any questions exist under items five, two, excuse me, five, three, five, four, and five, five, that is the MIT mod. That is ratifying the fact that we've sent the acceptance letter into H C A C, accepting those funds as we promised we would bring forward to you. That is also bringing forward a, our R F P, R F Q. Should be wanting to go out and solicit for grant administration and engineering services for those grants. Again, there's a lot of openness in that still, but similar to how, how this administration and this city has done in the past to attain or look to attain services for those. That's what we're looking to do here, as has been common practice in the past.
So I'll read these.
Hold up, mayor. Are we pulling five, two to discuss?
Yeah, we're, we're pulling five, one and five, two to discuss. We're trying to wait on Casey. I will, to get a full council for those. So I'll read five, three, four, and fives so that we can vote on them together. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two two dash zero zero five six, ratifying the city of Lamarck's acceptance, acceptance of grant funds from the Houston Galveston Area Council. Five, four, resolution number letter R dash two zero two two dash zero zero five seven, authorizing the issuance of a request for qualifications for engineering services for grant-eligible projects. Five, five. Five, five. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two two dash zero zero five eight, authorizing the issuance of a request for proposal for grant administration services for grant-eligible projects. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, there's no discussion on a consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move to item six, appointments, reappointments, or removals of all city boards and commissions. Council, do we have any appointments tonight?
I don't have any.
Michael?
Yes, all nominees. The mayor has them. Okay.
These the one that you were going to? Okay. Yeah, I mean, were these the one you were referring to?
Yes.
Do you have any others outside of this?
Yes, sir.
These are the names that we are considering for the tourist board over at Omega Bay. Those names are as follows. Darlene Barnes, twenty-six North Flamingo. Alan Harcika, fourteen, I guess that's South Skimmer. Leslie Cruz, thirty-seven North Omega. Cheryl Ann Farrell, thirty-four North Flamingo Street. And Patricia Shipley, one North Pelican.
All right, mayor, there's one more.
There's one more?
Mm-hmm. Mister Alan Waters, I believe. Give me just one second.
Alan Waters.
And I'm just going to read his address for the record because we did everyone else. Sorry, I don't have his address at the moment, but Mister Alan Waters has also applied to be a martyr.
Very good. We'll, we'll name him to the board pending.
One South Pinto. One South Pinto.
One South.
Pinto.
Pinto. Okay, one South Pinto. Those are the nominate nominees, council. Do we have a second for those nominations?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Let's move to new business, item seven, seven, one, annual bids request.
Yes, sir.
Just a point of order.
Just a point of order. I think he made the original motion. He couldn't second it.
Did you make the original in a second?
I started to, but.
Actually, no, I made the motion when I when I made the announcements of of the names. Yeah, yeah. No, no, you're fine, Joe. Thank you. Thank you for getting that. Uh. Annual bids, requests and proposals. Say so, would you like to take this one?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Um. As is normal custom each year, we put our annual bids out. These are annual bids that we have modified in some capacity. Uh, to adjust for the pending potential budget cuts we may have this year. We've made those adjustments and are now putting them forward. In addition to any regular uh. Ones that we've had to put out. Uh, in the past, we've also noticed any other regular services that we've had to put out. That have exceeded any of our thresholds in the past. We're looking to put those out as part of our annual bid process in order to streamline that. So we don't have to be keep coming back to you as things continue to come up. So that's what item seven one essentially is. This is not all of them. This is kind of just the first round that we can get started in hopes that we meet the threshold of our RFP um announcements. Have enough time to put it out properly. Correctly bid them, tabulate them, and then hopefully announce them in time for your September thirteenth meeting in hopes that they can take effect for October first.
Very good. Also, do we have any questions for Sayso? Uh, annual bids, requests and proposal? Are you looking for direction on this?
No, sir.
Action item or you're just sharing this?
We're just sharing that again. Um, we we were uh advised to be as open and transparent with that as possible. The idea that barring, there's no objection tonight on these items. Uh, for us to work with our city clerk's office to get these posted as soon as possible. For all these RFPs to go out accordingly, and at least in the first round. And we just want to start bringing them to you. Um, even if it's. Obviously before the fact this time or after the fact that any of the other ones, so that everyone is fully aware of what's happening.
Okay.
That's very good too, because it lets people to know to be prepared and get ready. So.
Yes, ma'am.
Tell other people too.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for that.
Yep, it was one of the directions you gave us uh when we first started and something that we're heating to.
Very good. Uh, any other questions about uh? Bid's requests and proposals? Hearing none, we'll move to item seven, two, special events discussion relating to special events, ordinance and processes. Say so.
Yes, uh, I I'm I'm gonna lean on Gus on this one uh for several items on this in particular. Uh, in light of uh, in 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 our short time together, we've had quite a few requests for special events. Uh, I would like to take it upon ourselves to streamline that a little bit. Uh, there's been a lack of consistency with how we've operated with our special events. Um, that exists even for so uh our our application. So this ninety days and since being here and since our brief review, there's not been one single. Event that has met that ninety day threshold. They all essentially violated that, although our ordinance says ten days. The processes become much more. Um, cumbersome than it has been in the past. Public safety is a very important thing for us to accomplish, and there is a lot of. Hey, you review this, take it to the next person and so forth. Now that you've already streamlined your schedule of fees, we'd like to also streamline this process and this application in line with that to make it much more efficient. And uh, make sure that it's coherent to what our ordinance says. Gus, you wanna chime in there?
Sure, absolutely. Um, so a- as the city manager said, um, staff. As as its routine duties and it kind of at the direction of council and keeping with best practices, we. Perform a somewhat audit of the ordinances and how. How how they're written. Um, this one is thirty years old. Um, it hasn't been looked at in thirty years. Uh, so. Staff began the process of looking at it and wanted to bring that to council to see um. As as we draft a new ordinance or potentially. Draft an updated one um that's now been addressed. Fewer than thirty years ago. Um, because it is, it passed November ninth nineteen ninety-two. So uh. If if there was anything from council that y'all were looking to see, if 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 as y'all posted special events. Things that you would have seen that we would not have seen, things you've heard from your constituents, that sort of thing. As we begin the process of looking and updating this ordinance and and the application process.
And just for the record, we ourselves, I guess in common practice, have had not. Completed special event permits ourselves. It's a common practice we've done at least since uh my brief time here. And we will continue to do so. We need to uphold ourselves in the same standards and thus we want to make sure it's a streamlined process. It's fair. And it's even for everybody, so we can move that forward for public safety purposes. We don't want to be in the business of where. Hey, somebody wants to put a special event on, but we can't do it because of this. All the special events we're trying to that are being proposed are good in nature and fair in nature, at least since I've been here, and we'd like to just make sure that a standard is followed. So what we'd like to do is we like to obviously update our thirty-year-old ordinance. And then bring back to the ordinance uh as well as the revised uh application. I cannot promise we'll do it by the next meeting, but we like to do it soon thereafter.
Yeah, there there needs to. I've 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 visited with one of our community organizers. Um, and uh, this person does events in other communities as well. One of the opportunities we have is to streamline. Our uh event process for those events that aren't generating revenue. Those events that, you know, they're not businesses. These are nonprofits. They're trying to do good in the community. Uh, and we can help them. Uh, expedite that process tremendously by doing things like. Uh, if they have reputable agencies that do their background checks. Uh, honoring those background checks. If it's a state agency, we know that their background check. Uh, should be. Uh, one that would uh be superior to anything that. Uh, that we would be able to provide, things like that. Finding ways to streamline. Uh, the process because we know that they are doing an inherent good for our community. So we shouldn't get them caught in red tape. That'll frustrate them. Uh, and then that perhaps will cause them not to wanna work in the uh in the Lamarck community. So that there needs to be a distinction. Is it for profit? Is it nonprofit? And if it's nonprofit, those events, in my opinion, need to be streamlined.
Mayor, that is along the line of of what we're looking to update as well as what constitutes a special event. What makes it a special event and 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 such? I mean, there's there's a gray area that we need to more clearly define there.
Anybody have any questions for? Mr. Garcia, any comments? About this special events ordinance and process?
Just a couple things. When I looked at it, yes, it's thirty years old, but um some things that I would like to see. Is. Is uh, instead of the the three-person full face photograph. I mean, it's in there, it says. Or part of the application says three copies of a current full face photograph. Why? Because he also gave a driver's license, so I think we can take that out and put in. The health certificate. I mean, that way it proves that they do have a health certificate. And just uh. Like you already addressed, the fees here, it says a hundred bucks, but we. Just approved the two hundred dollars. And the last one was just the hours of of operations at eight to five. I mean. I think eight to eight or, I mean, twelve hours, eight to ten, something like that, just. Pick, give it more. For the vendors to. Partake in the opportunity of making money. So that's only three things that I noticed.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, very good.
Asking for some clarification here. Uh, this section with regard to. Someone that has denied a. An application that indicates that they have a right of appeal. And. And city manager, Sessar or Gus, someone walk me through a person coming. Coming to ask for a permit under this. Scenario, walk me through that process.
Well. In the absence of set procedure, we kind of put one in place.
No, no, uh, uh, if assuming this passes, walk me through the process.
Well. That's what we're trying to fix is the process right now. They're really. One doesn't really exist. We're 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 asking to make sure that it's okay for us to. Create one in the absence of one. We're we're not, this is not an agenda item we're bringing for you tonight. We're actually basically saying that it's old. It's thirty years old and we would like to update it as well as update our special event forms, so they're in line with the ordinance. Right now, they do not match. And arguably. Um, are a little outdated. Based on the current demand for.
So I guess one thing I heard then is no one complies with the requirement that we have a ninety-day. Um, advance. Request.
Yes.
So we know that, so uh.
We would like to look at best practices from other cities.
From other cities.
Uh, and incorporate that into this process so we can bring you a fully vetted process. In the meantime, unfortunately, between now and the time we have one. We're gonna have to keep with the old process, which is kind of a lack of one right now. But the intention is to try to get one as soon as possible, so we can establish some order uh in that area. And fairness to residents, there's residents here present who have. Expressed an interest in special events. And unfortunately, it's just right now within the parameters we have, it is rather difficult. Uh, to to approve or deny or even go through the process as it stands now.
Internally, we want uh. Permits to be issued in a. In a non-judgmental fashion, right? Uh. So, but I go back to the section fourteen, if you want my feedback. It says appeals. Persons who have licenses, whose licenses have been suspended or revoked, may appeal by filing. A written notice of appeal with the city council. I just, I think that uh maybe the city council is not the. I don't know, it's not the form to go to, especially if you have a pending event. Uh, and they need an immediate response because we have. We have to call special meetings for. To consider these items. So I'm just, I would also look at, ask you to look at best practices in other cities for appeals.
Certainly.
On that side.
Certainly, we'll we'll definitely do so. I mean, usually now, since city manager, usually most cities has the ultimate authority to sign off on these special events. Then having somebody with that appeals process usually would be, uh, you know, your your actual counsel. Uh, unless there was a certain council member that was designated to do that on behalf of the the council in general.
Uh, just a question, and I do note in here that there is that exception for uh. For religious uh organizations, nonprofits. Uh, with regard to. The. This particular. Ordinance that you're suggesting. Now, is this the one we have now? I I'm confused.
We're, that is just for reference of what the old one is.
Oh, this is the old.
That's the old one. We have not edited it yet. I I just wanted to show you as a reference and establish that there is an issue. That we have a recurring issue with special events. I want to show you the need for one, both from administrative side, but also from a. Uh, court of ordinance side to make sure that we can address both.
Italian in my hard head. Okay. Now I understand. Now I understand. So you're gonna come back with actually a draft of a new ordinance is what I'm seeing.
So there's gonna be three things. You're gonna come back with a new ordinance. A new set of forms and then a new uh uh SOP or a standard operating procedure. That will fully walk anybody through in addition to the fact that we're creating a flow chart. Um, for for this, for this discussion, we're actually having a flow chart that says if it is a nonprofit, okay, we do this. If it's not. So we've already started that process internally, but we, before we proceeded with that, wanted to make sure that it was uh within our realm to come and 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 establish one. Admit that there's a problem. And then share with you our course of action to try to get rectified.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. Thank you.
I have one follow-up question there.
Um, I I've said that, Keisha, we're gonna. We're not acting on this tonight. You can visit. You, I know, we can't, we we're gonna, we're trying to move the meetings along. You can visit with the city manager after the meeting if you like. Thank you.
What is the the precedence you've set so far? That way, anybody. Out listening land can understand the current one that we're using.
The precedence has been that we've almost had to cancel some of our own events for not following the procedure. If it's, that's what's in there, that's what's in our form, it's what, that's what's in our ordinance, that's what we're gonna follow. Unfortunately, the past. Not pointing fingers, but. Previous administration, previous staffs may have inadvertently or purposely, I I can't say veered away from the process. In the absence of one, we have to stick with the one we have until we create a new one that we could bring before you to adopt to move forward. So right now, whatever it says on there, that's what we're gonna follow. And that's what we've been doing, and as stringent as that may be, and as as unfair as that may be to folks. That's that's what we have, and that's what we must follow until we have something different.
Okay. And Joe, with section fourteen, it says. I mean, it doesn't say they've been denied. It says suspended or revoked, so the council would have time to meet. Um, under this.
Right, under this one, so. I just wanna. We'll take all that consideration. We'll pull best practices from other cities.
Yes, sir.
Pull their ordinance as well. Hopefully, we have some that are. More suited to today's times. Uh, in 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 full honesty, this was probably written for much more major events and didn't take into fact some of the smaller ones. But the truth is those smaller events represent just as much of a problem. Or or potential safety concern than a large event one.
So right now, we're at ninety days and then ten days for the special.
Statically, our form says ninety, our ordinance says ten. Our, correct me if I'm wrong, Gus, on that. Um, it is optimal that we get it ninety days before, but our ordinance says ten. Then we also have the fact that. We might be a little more stringent than necessary for, like we mentioned, some of the vendors, but it doesn't make sense. We just want to streamline the process. And uh, we'd like to take that action doing for uh as long as we have your approval to 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 move forward accordingly.
Yeah, ninety days seems a bit kind of long, and so maybe in the ordinance, we can. We can distinguish between a big event, a large event and a small event, because a lot of people have. Smaller events in our community, that ninety days would be a long, it's it's a long time.
It does specify it in the order. It does specify what's what's considered as. Special event.
So if we keep putting the criteria, we'll be able to fit. Is it nonprofit? Is it profit? Is it large? What's the the expectation of attendance? Right? Is it smaller? You know. The more information we can get upfront, the easier I would think your process would be. Able to be streamlined.
Yeah, I thought.
That's the plan.
I thought for special events, it was ten days and normal events is ninety. Correct? That's what I read in here.
But I can't tell the difference.
That's that's.
That's the problem.
That's the ambiguity that we're trying to clear up. Um, just to kind of streamline it, because one would argue, well, what's the difference between a regular event and a special event?
Um, if you're looking to see it, talks about special events and what they are. So.
I I just think we need to maybe clear that up and also follow it because. Right now, we have the 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 stern reality that. To be very frank with you, most of our events that we've held recently would not have been able to happen had we upheld that fully. And that's. We don't want to be in that predicament. If somebody's trying to do something for the good of the community where we have to possibly take that action. We don't ever want to be that that person. We just have the obligation of public safety first. And to be equal for all.
And help me out, Sir. Person under our existing ordinance. I'm I'm an organizer of an event. Let's say I'm an organizer.
Yes, sir.
I come in and ask for a permit now. And I have other people that are gonna be participating there. Am I the only one that that needs the permit or do all the other individuals need the permit as well?
So under under right now, there's only, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have it in front of me right now. There's only a applicant. There's not a co-applicant, so that's one of the edits that we'd like to make moving forward to the forums. And that's what we're working on.
Thanks.
And this is for a point of clarity. This is what we're talking about. This is what we're working on, trying to rectify. That's what we need to streamline. So one is creating best practice or following best practices, establishing them, how they fit us. And then creating a ordinance SOP flow chart. And a form that properly fits our needs.
Well, as you're going through this process, my only comment, I think all of us up here share this, let's not, let's avoid trying to uh. Well, I'll move it go the other way. Let's be equitable in our application. Uh, right? That's that's our goal is equity. And uh treating everybody the same manner.
Yes, sir. I I just don't want to be in a position where we're ever. Having to turn somebody down. But if we are, want to make sure we've exhausted every every possible angle. There's been plenty of folks that have come up to us for special events. And they might need, and I hate to use this, but maybe some assistance, some handholding. They may not understand what a traffic plan may be. They may not have the wherewithal to do that. As a staff, as a team, we've taken that role to try to help them in order to not be in a situation where we have to stop their event. Because some folks, this may be a new process. Some folks may ask, why do I have to do this when I'm trying to do an event to help the city? It's just for public safety. We're just trying to follow our own ordinances and make sure that we're compliant. So I mean that to everybody. I'm sorry if we seem that way. We're not trying to. We're just trying to make sure everybody's. Remembering that public safety is our number one concern. And also following our own ordinances. So if we need to change ordinances, that's what this process will. Allow us to look at.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that I I speak once again for everybody here in saying this, is that. If there is an event that's happening in District B. I'm here to be your advocate. And uh, as well as other members of council and the mayor, so please, please let me know if if there's anything I can do in that regard.
Absolutely. Perfect example to that was when Council McCullough. Uh, stepped up and gave part of her funds that were allocated to her to help with a recent event that was held.
Yeah. Yeah, good stuff.
Thank you.
Any other questions about item seven, two? Seven, three. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three proposed. Proposed. Tax rate.
Absolutely. That item is for discussion under executive session. Uh, prior to voting, I'd like for us to. Possibly move towards executive session so we can have that discussion.
You're gonna want an action item, item under that, under that one?
Um.
It is.
It is.
Yeah, it's.
Nine, one.
Yeah, got you. Seven, four, items for the good of the order. What do you have, Sayza?
Um, nothing to report at the time of this uh call, except for condolences to staff who was uh. Going through some troubling times. I ask for all of you to have positive thoughts for some of our staff. I encourage everybody to uh please be understanding while we uh deal with certain matters. And I I appreciate everybody's continued support as we work through that process. I'd also like to identify uh the good news. Uh, we are up for an award with our uh police department. It is the Texas uh, the T M L. Um municipal services award, there's a prestigious award, we are a up for a, we're we're down to the final three. Out of as many municipalities that exist in the state of Texas that have applied, applied in a lot of different categories. One of the ones that we're being considered, I want to commend our police department and those that are present. Uh, we are indeed in the final three, and we're hoping that uh at October's uh annual conference, we hope to be named winners. Um, and it is highlighting the the effort that has been made through our community policing projects and the effect that it's already starting to have, even though we've just commenced.
Yes, cause my my crime rate is down. Big time. So I I thank you, uh, Chief and and you, your leadership.
That's all I have for the good of the order at this time.
Any other council members have anything for the good of the order?
Just school started, so be careful when you're driving. Um, lots of little ones don't see over the fenders too well, so be very careful when you're driving. Um, also, those that were home with their kids all summer like me should have a big giant Kool-Aid smile on your face. I do. Cause I can reclaim my house now. So um other than that, um everyone enjoy and be careful.
Well, I just wanted to congratulate Texas City I S D on getting a score of a B.
Yes.
This is a good hand. That took a lot of work uh with the community. Again, I wanted to uh recognize Amy Miller. And the things that she has done just within the last twelve months, uh when I was elected back in June, she and I had a meeting. About being more proactive and using our 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 laboratory system with our new principals at um at Haley. And they have done that at Sims, who went from an F score to a B score. And also Lamarck Middle School that went from an F to a C. So there are some very good things that can happen. When cities and school district work together, and this is a manifestation of that. Of that work, that are the meetings that were held last summer and the intentional uh strategies that were embarked upon and just kudos. To our city staff for um really doing that and making that happen. Um. Some of our kiddos do, they don't have internet access or there's gaps in that. And so uh they were able to uh connect with the library, also talk to the McDonald's manager as well, as as some uh. People could go in the parking lot, and so it's just really nice to see the community come together and to see a deliverable. And that deliverable is that our our district is now a B in the state of Texas, and that is absolutely amazing. That will impact our our home values, that will attack, impact a lot of different things. And so I just wanted to recognize Amy and her staff and the great city of Lamarck for the work that they did the last past twelve months. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have one alibi. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Well, uh I think Councilman Carlson to alerting me to this, so let's brag a little bit about District B. Hitchcock also received the B ranking as well, and and I know the city manager's kids go to the Hitchcock I S D district. So here we have a dynamic community, uh both Texas City and Hitchcock, and I'm sure Dickinson. Uh we're we're touched by five districts, Dickinson, um Hitchcock, Texas City.
Santa Fe.
Santa Fe and what's the fifth one? Is it Galveston Park over here?
I don't think we got.
It's good that four or five, I thought we had five. So congratulations to all, to all, and the teacher. God bless them all.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm good, sir.
You good?
I'm good now.
Well, certainly, we wanna acknowledge that our children are back in school and and it's important that we uh watch out for them as they walk. As they travel, they're still children, uh and they still uh don't always make the best decisions while traveling. So we have to over uh compensate to make sure that they're safe. I wanted to congratulate Suzie Koo and our finance department again on our latest audit. What we found in that audit is that we have an unqualified. Uh uh declaration, which means it's the highest honor, and that simply suggests that all of those things. That they researched, that they found to be in order with best practices and the laws of the federal government, state of Texas. And any other pertinent requirements that you would have as a municipality. Uh, different auditing company this year, uh for the first time, we had a new auditing company. Uh, and we still received uh the same uh status, the same uh opinion. Uh, and Suzie also led the finance department to uh be in uh in the running for uh an award. Financial reporting, uh and there's certainly stringent criteria we found, we heard from the auditor. Uh, the auditor says that this uh award is not given to any uh other municipality just because, but it's something you have to work at. Uh, something you have to show excellence in and proficiency, and we know that to be true. Uh, and we also know that the auditor said to us, uh when he was sitting before us. Uh, that there was not any reason to have any forensic audit, uh it's unnecessary. Uh Lamarck's finances are in order, uh and they found nothing that would alarm them or that would require them to recommend to us. That we would have a financial audit, that mean that we should have a forensic audit. So kudos to the Lamarck finance team for excellent, excellent work. I think we've, we've exhausted that line. Let's move now to uh uh. Say so, we can go down to uh, let's do first tax rate publicly.
With this mute, everybody.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Thanks, Joe, thanks. We we need to either, Sayza, Sayza, we need to either move to resolution one. Or we can move to executive session, your recommendation.
I think it's fair for us to have, you wanna have that discussion now on on five one?
Yeah.
We could do it.
I think we could do that.
If Casey comes in, she'll just have to, because that's gonna be a longer discussion because of the, it sounds like Joe wanna go over each one, or no? Yeah, we are. Okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, man. Come on, James, but hold on a minute, let me, let me catch up. Um. What are you asking, James?
Okay, run a bell whenever.
What, 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 which one you asking?
Uh, first ordinance uh on the uh.
We getting ready, we getting ready to go roll through that right now, so hold, yeah, hold what you got. So, uh you wanna go line by line, Joe, or you just wanna get into it, you wanna hear it?
Let's hear what.
Alright, so we're opening back up resolution uh.
Do you wanna speak on that?
Yeah, we we did tell another citizen that public comment had passed earlier in this meeting.
It's, well, James Osteen is the, wait a minute, wait, wait, I I I think I can handle this one. James Osteen is the Charter Review Committee Chairman. He's not an, he's not another citizen. He's actually the person that led this committee to make these recommendations. So I think we're in, we're in a good ballpark right now.
Absolutely. I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear.
You wanna make sure that everybody else understood what was happening. Thank you, Gus.
What I wanna do is uh, and Gus, you're gonna have to help us on this, uh but if you remember, when we was doing the uh charter amendments. Uh, we we trying to figure out how we, how how to do the amendments and then I found on section. It 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 referred us to go to the state law on a lot of the, on amendments, how to do amendments. Uh, the charter referred us to state law and uh. And it, and it specifically referred us to this section of state law, section nine point zero zero. Four. And let me read it uh, and what, I I think we're gonna have to have an ordinance. To set the date instead of a resolution and. Uh, if you wanna pull it up.
I haven't.
Okay, you remember that section?
Yeah.
Okay, let me, let me read it to y'all and then y'all kind of figure out the right way to go on this. Charter amendments. Uh, the governed body of a municipality on its own motion may submit a proposed charter amendment to municipalities qualified voters for their approval at an election. The governing body shall submit a proposed charter amendment to the voters for their approval at an election if the submission is supported by a petition. Sign by a number of qualified voters of the municipality equal to at least five percent of the number of qualified voters of the municipality. Or twenty thousand, whichever number is a smaller. I think that part refers to if somebody here takes a petition round. Wanna make a charter change. Here's what we, we really need to be interested in. The ordinance ordering the election shall provide for the election to be held on the first authorized authorized uniform election date prescribed by the election code. Or on the earlier of the date of the next municipality general election or presidential general election. The election date must allow sufficient time to comply with other requirements of law. And must occur on or after the thirtieth day of the date the ordinance is adopted. Notice of the election shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation published in the municipality. The notice must include a substantial copy of the proposed amendment. Two, include an estimate of the anticipated physical impact of the municipality or to the municipality. If the proposed amendment is approved at the election and three. It must be published on the same day in each of two consecutive successive weeks. With the first publication occurring before the fourteenth day before the date of the election. An amendment may not contain more than one subject. The ballots shall be prepared so that a voter may approve or disapprove of any one or more amendments without having to approve or disapprove all of the amendments. The requirement imposed by subsection C two does not waive government immunity for any purpose. And a person may not seek injunction relief or any other judiciary remedy to enforce the estimate of anticipated physical impact on the municipality. I think of, y'all remember some of these cities have done charter change, how they they list, just like you got in the resolution. They show what the charter changes are and show for against. That's in the newspaper where it's just practically what is the ballot's gonna look back like in a newspaper. Where the people, where the citizens can see what the, what it's all about. But I could be wrong, but the way I read this, it's gonna take an ordinance to do it, Gus. You can uh, you know.
Yeah, um, the Lamarck Charter sets out as a home rule municipality, the city of Lamarck retains. A lot of authority. The Lamarck Charter Agreement sets out four things that, four general items that must be done by ordinance. Lamarck calls its res, its elections, all of them by resolution. So I feel comfortable calling it by resolution. If the city council would like to call it. As redrafted as an ordinance, we can have the discussion today on which ones you would like for us to bring back. Um, and then have the two readings with the public hearing, that is at councils, that is at councils' pleasure.
So, but just, so let's just get the distinction here. Um, you're suggesting that. Our charter says that that uh we can do this by resolution?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, alright, no. Are you suggesting best practice?
I I am suggesting that the Lamarck Charter sets out four things that we have to do by resolution. Lamarck in the past.
Resolution by order.
I'm sorry, by order. Four general things, fines, spending money, indebtedness of bonds. And the grant of a franchise. Those are the four general things. So Lamarck has throughout history, and I asked. The, I reviewed the city clerk's office, it always calls elections by resolution. That's why I did it by a resolution here. If the council would like to do it by ordinance, we can do that, but you are a home rule. So what, what is, what?
It's it's stated, this is about a home real city. This, this here is for a home real city. It specifically says the ordinance ordering election shall provide for the election to be held on the first authorized uniform election date. Prescribed by the election code. The charter refers you to this section for amendments. It's in black and white here.
Let's do this.
But y'all do what you wanna do, but I.
Let's do this, let's do this. Let, let, let Gus get a chance to see what you're looking at. We will continue thi- this discussion, I mean, show him, uh, James.
I think he's looking at it, aren't you?
So let's continue this discussion, give Gus a chance to read uh and and make an an interpretation based on what he's reading. Uh, doesn't stop us from actually looking at these amendments.
Yeah.
Yeah, having discussion on them, uh seeing where we are with that part of it. We can kill two birds with one stone, so.
If, if I may on this, uh Gus, correction, do we not have until thirty days before set election to uh bring this forward?
Yes, so that, that's why I was saying, if the council is more comfortable with an ordinance.
We still have time to do it and have it on the, if the council chooses to have it on the November ballot, we still have time.
Because essentially, we already have a special meeting uh set for the twenty ninth, correct me if I'm wrong? And then again, a regular scheduled meeting for September thirteenth. So essentially, if you move to do so, if you allow us a time from now and and between the agenda on the twenty ninth, if you wanna see this as an ordinance, we'd have first reading then. Second reading September thirteenth, and it's still more than ample time to meet the thirty day consensus, assuming that the item is passed and that there's no questions for follow up.
Yeah, that, that, that sounds workable. That's workable.
You know, state law overrides our charter. And this refers you to state law, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, we'll get it.
But, you know. It's, it's worth looking at.
Yeah, we'll get it, yeah. That's what I say, we'll, we'll slow that part down and get it. We got time. Let's get into this discussion uh about charter amendments. Joe, you were saying something earlier uh in the meeting about how you wanted to look at that, or something.
First, I'll be upfront. I, I think I emailed the city manager last night at one o'clock this morning. I have not had uh time sufficiently to go over each, each item. I've been doing my best. But I finally gave up at one o'clock this morning and uh. So if we get more time, like we've talked about, I think my issues are gonna be resolved.
Yeah.
So.
We can push it back to the twenty ninth on an action item if we have to.
Well, let me ask you, and just for clarification, let's just be sure about all these dates. Because a previous discussion we had about this said that our drop dead date was the twenty second, I believe. Of August to get this on the November uh ballot, so.
I, I think that's a, i- is that a different election?
Yeah, a- and and I apologize, there may have been um, I may have been blending the two together. When I was speaking on the recall election and I I should have been, I should have differentiated between the two. Um, chapter nine of the local government code provides a slightly different timing uh.
So the twenty second is not in play for for the charter.
Correct. I mean, i- I mean, it, it's a date I'm aware of, but i- it's not the, the, the. Chapter nine sets out different timing.
Well, then that, then that gives me time.
Okay.
Similar to that point, I know.
If it would be appropriate, just to say table.
We can, we can table it, or if if we can have just discussion on it, there's some first thoughts that that council might wanna share. Uh, at this time, uh, we can do that.
All, all I ask is that, I've had feedback from some individuals, but take a look at them, I would love to hear. I know there's some sections that, that um, I'd like some clarity to the section with regard to, to recall. Uh, in in terms of what that process is, who responds to this, uh I think there's some clarity there. I'd like to, to understand the role and I, I know that the city has discussed in the past. Uh, a uh, what's it called, an ethics commission or something like that? And what role, if any, would be appropriate in a charter? Uh, the um, we've had previously on the last election as well too, and this is where charter comes in. An issue with regard to qualifications of people running for office, uh that is set forth in the charter. Uh, if, just gives us time to take a look at things and make some ideas.
And let's, to, 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 uh, I, I don't know if Joe's reaching for this point, but, but what you've said brought me to this point. We need to be clear with our community. The council has the ultimate authority to add to. Take from or alter these charter amendments as council sees fit. Now, I've never seen a council alter a charter amendment, uh but I have seen councils take off. Uh, but I have seen councils take off and add to, uh, based on what those amendments are. Uh, so we want to make sure that we are aware so that there is no miscommunication. Uh, or misinformation, that is a right of this council to do so. Uh, certainly the council takes that right very seriously. Uh, as we move forward in deliberating this charter amendment process, go ahead, Jim.
I think that, that's it, having given us that extra time is very helpful, thank you.
Very good, Michael, you had anything?
Only question I have is, I mean, I'm, I'm all for following the state law, state law says we got to do it as an ordinance, so, so be it. Um, however. If we're going to table this, do we need to make a motion to table it?
Yes, please. Before you do, we want to make sure that.
Right, exactly, I just want to make sure I'm clear and the citizens are clear of what we need to do, but. I'm all for, if we have to do an ordinance, do an ordinance.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that, that's, I don't think that's an issue for anybody. Uh, Kim?
So what you brought up, uh, Councilman Osteen was that. Uh, it needs to be held in the November election, is that, are you saying that's what the state law is saying?
Yeah, they uh. The next, you know, regular scheduled uh, national election or.
Right.
Or, yeah, I can read it for you if you want me to.
No, you don't have to read it, we, you know, I'm, I'm a real big believer that everybody, everyone should have an opportunity to vote. And in the November elections, you get more of our residents out to vote. And I, and instead of the May elections, when you don't have as many people that will come out, I said, I think it's important that.
Yeah.
We allow an opportunity for something this important, um, for our residents to participate in.
The, the way it reads the state law is it have to be in the November election.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Alright, that's what I thought, thank you.
Very good, any other questions? Uh, our discussion on charter amendments. Uh, we'll let Casey settle, settle in, Casey. I had to put you on the spot. We're at charter amendments, do you have any questions at this point? Uh, we are getting an interpretation from the attorney. Uh, we have plenty of time to call the election for November, uh, and that's kind of where we left it so far.
No questions for me right now, I think hearing the attorney's interpretation is great.
Very good. Say so, you good?
No, sir, nothing further.
Alright, we are not going to, oh, yeah, we are.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this till the twenty ninth.
You say it?
Okay.
All in favor? Uh, any polls? Show a stand table, item five two. We'll do this before we go into executive session. Uh, what we will have is I will announce this. Uh, item, uh, and I will speak as I respond to these accusations. Uh, and as we gear up for this campaign, uh, share with you, uh, some of those things that are on our heart. Uh, then we will turn this over to Mayor Protem to conduct the rest of this actual item. Five two, resolution number letter R dash two zero two two. Dash zero zero five five, calling a recall election for the position of mayor. Providing details relating to the holding of such election, providing for severability. Containing other provisions relating to the subject and providing an effective date. Certainly, we thank each and every one of you that have participated in this process. This is a process that speaks to, excuse me, Casey, this is a process that speaks to democracy. Uh, it is the people's right to do. According to what the charter outlines, uh, and we respect that right. It does not say that that right, uh. Has to uh, be done in any certain way, it just affords people the right. Uh, but because it is a right and because there are accusations made, I also have a right. I have a right to respond to those accusations, I have a right to face my accuser. And I have a right to lay out my case, uh, for why this recall is unwarranted. Uh, and why this council is doing, uh, a tremendous job at moving this city forward. And I am simply going to, uh, take the words that are written on a paper. And I'm just going to ask some questions about them. Uh, and I'm certainly going to point out a few things, uh, about what we have been doing. Maybe a few motives about why we're here and what those persons seek, uh, and we'll set the table. For a tremendous three months that we're ready for. Uh, before this, we could not speak on it because it was not an issue that was before the council. And so you heard me as mayor, just make blanket denials, didn't make a whole lot of them. I let the entire process take place, didn't say one word while they were out there, uh, being a part of this process. But now it's before this council and I get a chance to respond. And I will respond from here, from here on out, moving forward, so that the people might understand what's actually happening in our city. This is the recall petition that was, uh. That was created for me, uh, as your mayor. Uh, and it reads as follows, and I'm going to interject, uh, and respond. It reads as follows. I am speaking for myself on behalf of other citizens in Lamarck for the reasoning. On why we are pulling the recall and why we want Mayor Keith Bell out of our local government. We are wanting Mayor Bell out since everything that he has done is unethical. Stop there, that's the first accusation, my question is, where's the evidence? Is the open council meeting, those folks that were part and parcel of this recall petition? Those that organized it, where is the evidence you may approach at this time? There, there isn't any evidence, I have, I, I have, I have the floor, Keisha, I have the, I have the floor. I have the floor, I have the floor, I have the floor, I have the floor, those gentlemen. Those gentlemen, those fine gentlemen with the Lamarck Police Department. I have the floor. This recall petition was turned into this council, we are under that line item. And I have a right to address those accusations. I know that we might not all like the fact that I have a right. But I do have a right. Just like you have a right, Keisha, you are duly elected official and you have rights. I'm a duly elected official and I have rights, now. I was expecting somebody to bring evidence, but apparently they won't, and, and evidence in your opinion. Evidence is factual information, there is no evidence of any unethical behavior. We are, we are, if you, if, if you have evidence ma'am, if you have evidence. Of unethical behavior, you may approach, not, not your word, evidence, not your word, evidence. Now, and if we're going to continue to do this, sirs, I would like to respond. I let, I've let them respond for thirty days and I didn't say one word. I've let them go out and through an entire community to say whatever they wanted to say about me as mayor. And I didn't say one word, I have a right. To start this campaign off by sharing with them the accusations that were made against me as mayor. And if in fact there is any evidence to support these accusations, now, there's no evidence, there's only opinion. We are wanting Mayor Bell out since he's unethical, he should be arrested, listen to, you see, maybe we don't want people to hear what, what was written. Maybe we don't want people to hear what was written, if they interrupt me again. If they interrupt me again, I have a right to respond, say so, I have a right to respond. If they interrupt me again, I am asking that they be escorted out, I have a right to respond. Somebody's interrupting, if, yeah, again, if you have, if you have, if you have evidence. If you have evidence, you can give it to one of those fine officers and they can approach and they can bring it, if you have evidence. Now. He should be arrested and charged for his criminal activities that he has done in the city of Lamarck. What criminal activities, where's the evidence? Bring it. We, we, no, you, no, we're not, we're allowed to bring evidence, this is the, this is the bringing evidence portion. If, 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 again, if they interrupt me. If they interrupt me, say so, I'm asking you to do your job. Thank you. He should be arrested and charged for his criminal activities. What criminal activities? Where are they, anyway, there are none. His way of exercising power in a cruel and arbitrary way has caused nothing but chaos. Again, the council that is before you is a part of a council manager form of government. A council manager form of government, among other things, says that we are equal partners. All five members have equal power, we all have one vote, what's the difference? The mayor gets to preside over the meeting. And so I am abusing power, there is no way for me to abuse power because I cannot act alone. This is a weak form of government, this is not Texas City, we are not a strong form of government. We are a weak form of government and the majority of our power lies within our city manager's hands. So I don't know where I'm abusing any power, that is an accusation that's unfounded. Bell is very, is a very racist person. In fact, I've been giving, giving all sorts of kudos because through my eighteen year history, I have never made it about race. And I have represented the single member district that has the most African Americans in this city. And I've never made it about race, I've not one time made it about race, people here know me. They don't, you can't look on my Facebook page, you can't look at any quotes that I gave. And in any way, shape or form, they'd find any racist language, people know me and they know this is a lie. He's caused an abundance of racial division in the community. I've caused an abundance of racial division in the community, I am not the one that had a Confederate flag hanging from my tree.
Mayor, it, mayor.
I didn't do that, I didn't do that, I'm going, I'm going to continue, I, I, I will, I will. I will, I will, I will, I will abide, I have a right to respond. These are accusations that were made against me and I have a right to respond to these accusations.
I would just.
Now, I will, I will, I will make sure that I respond to them appropriately.
And I would just urge us all to stay on the agenda.
We'll stay on the agenda, this is part of the, is this not part of the agenda? Are we, are we not in a resolution where we're calling for a recall election? Is this not, is, is this, is this not, is this not the petition that was filed? That in, that, that caused this recall election to be on this agenda, yes or no?
It is.
If that's true, these allegations or these accusations are made against me, is that true?
It is made against you in the office, that is.
Okay, do I have a right in this country to respond to those allegations?
It, it's not that you don't, I was just saying, I urge that we pay very close attention to the agenda and we stay on.
Okay, now, he goes against. Yeah, let, let's do it, let's, let's do it like this, let's do it like this. He goes against what taxpayers request, he goes against taxpayers' request. Uh. For our city, again. We need evidence and that's what I'll say, Casey. Let's leave it at that, we need evidence of these things, we have, we don't have any evidence of these things. He uses the podium to verbally assault and attack law-abiding citizens. Evidence of these things, evidence of these things. I'm defending myself from not being a racist, ma'am, thank you very much, I will continue. We've asked you to allow me to speak and I appreciate you allowing me to speak like I allow you to speak, I appreciate that, thank you. He allows criminals, Dana Loftus and Chris Lane to do his dirty work. Such as vandalizing legal signage and smear campaigns. Simply, where's the evidence? Where's the evidence? Of any of these things as they associate with Mayor Bell, there is no evidence. The way, uh, let's see. This way, it's subjects, oh, he says that I, uh, use other people's phones to keep. Uh, my public, my phone records out of the public eye, I have a city phone. That I use for city business, before that, when any open records request has been done on my phone. I turned in all of my information, everything that was requested was turned in, there is no evidence of this. Mail Bell has taken bribes from builders to build in the community, there is no evidence of this. At all, I've been here eighteen years, there has never been an accusation of these things, there is no evidence of these things. He's offered taxpayer, uh, taxpayers' money in exchange for bribes to help with this campaign. Again, there is no evidence of these things. You have to have evidence if you're making an accusation against somebody, there is no evidence of these things. Bell was required to report, uh, through the T E C, a finance report. During this time, he intentionally failed to report donations that were given, there is no evidence that anybody intentionally failed. To report donations that were given, there is no evidence of that. There is no, there has been no finding by the ethics commission, go and look it up. Go look and see if there was any findings by, by the ethics commission against Mayor Keith Bell campaign, you won't find any. No evidence. The reasoning, the reason that I do that is I hide money from the citizens. Well, my campaign, my, my campaign, uh, 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 bank account is over at Texas First Bank. I think the Doyle family owns, uh, that bank, very prestigious bank in our community. No evidence. He used dirty cricket police chief and a few others, uh, uh. Unethical, ethical police officers to go after innocent taxpayers for not siding with his beliefs. There's no evidence of that, where's the evidence? Like I said before, community, there is no evidence of Mayor Bell having any connection. To anything that anybody is alleging, there is no evidence as much as people want you to believe. That it is. Keith Bell tried to increase the citizens' taxes to the highest tax rate in, in the entire county. There is no evidence that Keith Bell tried to raise our taxes, here's the thing that, that, that they don't want to tell you. I said it to you before. We are a council manager form of government, Keith Bell cannot do anything by himself. Not one thing on this council, not one thing off of this council. I function in concert with the four other members on this council, that is state law. There is no evidence to prove anything, anything otherwise. He's tried to persuade citizens to set up fake accounts with his wife and daughter's name for them to be able to go after bond money to line his pockets. There is no evidence in any way, shape or form of any of these allegations. That are being made at all, if there was evidence. The evidence would already have been in the hands of Officer Crowe, there was evidence, trust me. That evidence would have already been on social media, there is no evidence. Bell has been in office almost twenty years and he's had zero positive accomplishments, Casey, could I just say a few of my positive accomplishments, just a few of them? Uh. We wouldn't have a fire and EMS merged department without my leadership. We would not have had a West Side Fire Station without my contribution and leadership. The city's blight reduction program that totally transformed District A from dilapidated structures into new homes. Uh, into brand new affordable homes, that was my brainchild. The code enforcement department, the size in which it is now, that was because of the work that I did. The amount of demolished homes in the city that increased exponentially, uh, through the, through the time that I was here as a council member. Uh, that can be contributed to me, the new homes that have been built and that are being built in District A, that can be contributed to me. The new homes that have been built and that are being built in District A, that can be contributed to me. The new subdivisions that were, that are being built across the city, that can be contributed to me and the rest of our council. But since I'm the one that's being accused of not doing anything, let me give you a few more. Uh, body cameras for our police officers, the rental ordinance program to help protect those uh, that are being abused by slum lords, five hundred thousand dollars in COVID relief to businesses working with the E D C and the Public Transportation Unit, uh, that, uh, we know, uh, moves around time, town, island, uh, connect transit. Those are things that I've, a few things that I've done over the years, but since I've been mayor, we've had our largest commercial economic development. We've had a deal that fell through the cracks with one of our developers. I made a phone call to Jerome Carroll. And now that, that site is going to be one of the greatest tourist attractions in our region. Those grants, those forty-eight point nine million dollars worth of grants, uh, the previous council authorized and voted and received those grants. They're not here yet. They're on the way. They'll be here in twenty twenty-three. The reason why we are able to talk about all of these nonsensical things on social media is because nobody's talking about gunshots. And people aren't talking about gunshots because crime is down. Since I've been the mayor, crime is down. I've had two things that I came into office with, two mandates. The first one is new leadership, and we have new leadership at every major department level in our city. And the second one is the reduction of crime. Both of those things turned out to be true. We are a transparent government. We are online. We have much of our information, not all of it, not yet, but much of our information, much more than we've ever had available to our community members online. More police are on the street, community policing is back, and whether you all remember it or not, a year ago, little over a year ago, I won with ninety percent of the vote. Ninety percent of the vote. Now, we've addressed basically every allegation on this list. And what I need you to understand is none of these allegations have proof. None of them at all. And if you don't have proof, if you don't have evidence, then you need to ask yourself, should I really believe this? I would ask who's, who's making the accusation? Who are these people that are making these accusations? And we intend to talk about that during this campaign. We intend to talk about motive during this campaign, and we intend to expose all of those people in our community that are trying to undermine our community, and we are going to expose why. I'll leave you all with that. Having said that, let's move now to a time and a place that we can. We can have Mayor Protem take over. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comment.
Yes.
Ms. Carroll, will you read our action item? Five-two.
We will not have discussion over this matter.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but we'll call the guy to.
Item five-two is resolution number R dash twenty twenty-two dash zero zero five-five, calling a recall election for the position of mayor, providing details relating to the holding of such election, providing for separability, containing other provisions relating to the subject, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Uh, at this point, uh, procedurally, would you like us to have discussion first or go ahead and call for a motion? And then a, a second and then have discussion? And then take a vote either way.
Mayor Protem, i- if I may, I, I like to ask that as you deliberate, as you have any questions that may arise. Um, Gus has been the most versed on this situation to this point. Please address any questions to him. And in the absence of him having a proper response, give him a few minutes to rectify that. Because I do think that there, in, in lieu, in, in case there are some questions, please direct them to him directly as this is a, uh, to our base.
And, and.
Discussion.
For our purposes, my personal preference, but I'm going to defer here, is to ask a motion and then.
That's fine.
That, okay, that's what I'll, I'll, I'll ask for motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number R dash two zero two-two dash zero zero five-five.
I need a second.
My second.
We have a motion made and properly seconded. Uh, we'll open it for discussion at this time. Any council member wishes to discuss the resolution calling for a recall election for the position of mayor and setting that date?
I'll go last.
Michael, Council, Carlson?
Well, like I've always said, I mean, it's a democratic process, right, wrong and different. I will stand by the Constitution, and everything has been done. They've obtained the, the number of signatures that are verified, so it's time to move forward.
Okay. Uh, council member McCullough?
Uh, yeah, um, you know, I think this is an, um, hmm, a process that I've been thinking a lot about recently. I think there are many things that were, um, that have been brought to us as a council, you know, comments from citizens that raise a lot of concerns about validity about some of these, you know, signatures certainly, and, and, and different things that bring a lot of alarm to me personally, and I think all of us, you know, and we, we want to know that we're moving forward with something that is legitimate. Um, having said that, we have, as a council, brought it forward to this point and have said thus far that, you know, we respect, you know, the process that was followed with city management, uh, with city staff, the, um, the appropriate amount of signatures was received. I agree. I think we have to follow the process, and I will take heart in the fact that I, while I I support my mayor, and I believe that this process will hopefully bring forth just further clarity. And, um, however, that said, yeah, I believe we have to move forward and, and then let hopefully as many people as possible in the city of Lamarck, uh, let their voice be heard.
So. Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember Yancy?
Yes, this is a sad day in our city because we are finally moving forward. We have deliverables that have been delivered. And I believe that this is a very personal matter that does not have anything to do with our community as a whole. And it's sad that we, that we have to spend taxpayer money on personal vendettas. As a district gay representative, I can attest to some of the things that this mayor has done that has been phenomenal. As a citizen, I can tell you of the outrageous cruel treatment since some people have a problem with some people saying the word racist. So we'll call it cruel treatment because that's exactly what it's been for over a year. Our families have been harassed. Our dogs poisoned. My husband called a boy, not one time, but several times. Yeah, I see you nodding your head. I see you.
Council, council.
I'm, I'm going to talk because I have endured abnormal behavior. It is bizarre. Mayor Protem, it is bizarre.
Councilmember.
I'm still talking. I am still, and I have the floor. I have the floor. And I will maximize my time.
Councilmember, just upon the order, we're sticking to the agenda.
We are on the agenda, and it's my time to talk. It's my time to talk. I will follow. It's my time to talk. Thank you so much.
Keep the topic on that, please.
This has been very difficult. Because to my fellow council people, some of you have not endured it. And it's outrageous that we have to spend taxpayer money on something that has nothing to do with taxpayers. We need to be out there as council people advocating for our city, working for our city, doing the things that's necessary. We just missed an opportunity to have more money for this city. Dixon got fifteen million dollars from H G A P. And we have four. They have twenty-one thousand, we have nineteen thousand. We should be at those meetings, but instead we're in attorney offices fighting because we're being sued. This is taking time away from our effectiveness. And I'm so sorry for those of you that have no clue what I'm talking about, but it will be explained. Because the mark deserves good leadership. We do not need unnecessary distractions. We have an, an amazing city manager and some amazing councilman people that are ready to do the work. I will be, because this is a district A, uh, mayor, and the last district A mayor, Geraldine Sam, was recalled. I had, do have some concerns about that pattern. But I have received phone calls, Councilwoman Casey, from people who did not say that their, their signatures were on there, they didn't sign. Mike Jones, the rapper, and his number from the rap song is on the recall list. So I am concerned about this process, the way it looks, the perception. And just to let everybody know, I will, I, I will have my day and my say. Because I think Lamarck citizens need to know what this really is about in its time. I will, I'm praying for our city. I'm praying for you, Mayor. I'm praying even for your enemies. And I'm praying for the, the enemies of the mark because at the end of the day, the data doesn't lie. Look at the data that, uh, of what is being accomplished in the midst of all of this. In the midst of all of this, we are still accomplishing great work. The data doesn't lie. Tonight, there was no evidence. And I'm encouraging the prayer warriors and the pastors of this area to pray and fast because I'm, I'm ready to go forward and do the work. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Yancy, for your passionate remarks. Uh, Mayor, before I close it out and ask the vote, any final comments from you, sir?
Uh, yeah. We will, we will continue to answer this. Uh, we will continue, uh, to tell the truth. Uh, it, the time is now for us to continue to open our mouths uh, and in a, in a venue, in, in, in a different venue, Casey. I, I, I respect, I respect, we did it the way we needed to do it. But, but you will hear a lot more from me, uh, as relates to motive, uh, and as it relates to method. And not only of the, the person that's leading this, but there are some people with that person, and all of them have motive. And we're going to share that with you, uh, as we share the accomplishments of this great city. The last thing I want to say is this, Mayor Protem, if you allow me to say this. I, I want y'all to, I want y'all to, to notice who's not a part of this chorus that's saying that these things are happening in our city and these things are detrimental. James Osteen didn't a part of that chorus. He and I are the longest-serving council members in this city. Former Mayor Ron Crowder is not a part of that chorus. Former Councilmember Clint Brown, God rest his soul, wasn't a part of that chorus. Former Mayor Carlton Getty isn't a part of that chorus. Former Councilmember Chris Lane didn't a part of that chorus. These are serious men and serious politicians that have been fixtures in our city for decades in Lamarck politics. None of them have ever said anything about me as it relates to corruption or any other accusation in this document. That ought to tell you something. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, sir. Uh, very good. And just one personal comment. Keith Bell is a friend. Before I came to council, Keith Bell remains a friend, period. And so just wanted to make that very clear.
Absolutely.
And, uh, so at that, uh, I'll, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor of calling the recall election for the position of mayor to be set for, uh, Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, uh, please indicate by saying aye at this time.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Uh, aye. Um, any nays? And one abstention. Uh, we had, uh, three ayes, uh, one, uh, one, no, no nays and one abstention. Uh, the motion passes. I'll turn it back to you, man.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, uh, looks like seven four. Aye, it's seven four one. Is that what that is? Uh, say so. We are going to do that in executive session, yes?
That is correct.
All right, let's move to, uh, item eight, executive session. City Council for the city of Lamarck. Uh, Texas reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any matters listed above as authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, deliberations about real property, five-five-one dot zero-seven-three, deliberations about gifts and donations, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, personnel matters, five-five-one dot zero-seven-six, deliberations about security devices, five-five-one dot zero-eight-six, economic development. We will go into executive session to consider, uh, five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, amending the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three tax rate, uh, and eight-two, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-six, deliberations about security devices. Consideration and implementation of security devices in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Care, do you have time?
Seven fifty-seven.
We will close this, uh, special meeting at seven fifty-seven.
Yes.
And we will recess into executive session.
We are back out of executive session at.
I'm fifty-two.
Oh, my goodness, that was a long executive session. We are now on. Back on item nine, I think eight, nine, nine, one, item nine. Actions taken from executive session. Uh, section five, five, one dot zero, seven, one. Amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three tax rate. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I move that we adopt a fifty-three cent tax rate. And I call for the staff to arrange for the appropriate public hearings. Uh, I feel confident that based on the preliminary assessments of the tax rolls um and the worksheets that. They're gonna, that the, they will come back even higher than what's on the roles presently. Um, and by adopting a fifty-three cent tax rate tonight, this allows us. It preserves our ability to respect the legal timeframes that we have to respect and gives us the ability to. Have further discussions with our county tax assessor's office. We all look forward to collaborating. With the county tax assessor's office and working together to reach an expedient resolution and something that. We feel confident that can serve our city in the best way.
A point of information.
The, oh, did I just jump in too fast?
No, 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 uh, the proposed tax rate.
Uh, yeah, that's what I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Big in, big in, friend.
I, I moved that, yeah, sorry, sorry, everyone, we're not adopting anything tonight. Forgive me, it's just late night, so. I'm proposing a proposed tax rate of fifty-three cents. Thank you. Um, and like I said, we're looking forward to, to working with the tax assessor's office. It's what it's about, collaboration and we. Really respect all the citizens, also appreciating that we're in a. You know, a little bit uncharted territory and really trying to make sure we move forward in the right way and respectful way, legal way. Um, in a way that has the big picture in mind, so.
Do you second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Good, so go ahead.
This is. You know, I, I. Have high blood pressure, hypertension, everything else, but there's one thing that I never suffer from is a headache. And I have a headache right now of a misproportion because of these. This discussion, I really do not enjoy executive sessions because it's not in me to, to. To hide everything, right? These discussions, but, but you know, I guess the law works and it's worked for all these years. Uh, God knows probably Mr. But if you were back here sometimes thinking, I wish I could discuss these outside. And, um, but we have a challenge and this is the best way that I'm summarizing this. Is that there, that we have some errors that occurred on a tax calculation worksheet. There are city staff and the tax assessor collector's office. Are collaborating in trying to determine the appropriate rate. Uh, and there are some other. Offices involved in that effort. Uh, we hope that this can be settled and an agreement reached rather quickly. This, we're accepting this as this was described. We have, if we set this proposed, this rate at this, if we propose this number. Remember, this is just a proposal. We can come back. In a week's time. And we will have another meeting in a week's time. Um, and actually hopefully have the worksheet worked out. And we'll can just go back then and lower. We cannot, if we today set it at the rate. We cannot increase it in any way. So the de minimis rate that's been officially put out in the twenty-two is forty-six cents. Forty-six cents. My hope is we honored the tax, uh. Rollback rate of forty-seven cents. The, the, um, but with having said all this and this work that's going on. Uh, we have to have a starting point. That would permit us to work down. We can't set something on the low side and work up. Even from forty-six to forty-seven, we couldn't do that today. So, so that's the purpose behind this particular proposal in, in my mind, it is. As, as my understanding. And that's why I'm willing to second it at this point because we have a bunch of notice requirements. That have to be put in the newspaper, that have to announcements, meeting schedule. It's a very tight timeline. And, uh, um. I give you the reason why I have the headache, so, uh, that's all there.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I got something.
Go ahead, Mike.
I don't get on my cell box very often, um. But in front of me, there's a little saying that I look at every time I'm up here. And it's from General MacArthur, and it says, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone. The courage to make tough decisions and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by equality of his actions and the integrity of his intent." Trust me. Back there, I fought a lot. But I need to do the right thing, so. I look at this saying every single day, every minute I'm up here, and it's to make sure that I'm doing the right thing for the citizens. And for the city and our staff. So that's what leadership is. So thank you, sir.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm good. So this should be a unifier. This issue. Should be something that we all come together as citizens, uh, to, to remedy this. Uh, we, we are in uncharted wa- waters, uh. Even some of my professors at the University of Texas. That I'm still good friends with are a little alarmed by this. Um, but we're trying to work on it with our tax assessor. Office and, uh, this allows us some time and, uh, we just need to. To hope as a community, we can come together because we want our numbers to, to be correct. And we want to be, we want to be able to provide services and quality services with the right numbers. And so. Let's be patient. We're having extra meetings that were not scheduled to deal with the timelines. And that's why we took so long in the back trying to make sure that we're meeting. The deadlines because we know our good friend council, councilman Osteen is gonna be, you missed a day. So, so we want to make sure that we get those things right as well, so, um. But, but this is what like Joe was said about, about his head hurting. We just want to make sure that, that, um. We, we do it, we do it according to the law and in an excellent way. So, but this should be a unifier. For all of us to come together to get the right number that we're supposed to have for our city.
Yeah, so, well, either Gus or Mr. Manager. Speaking of which.